Let me call the February Town of Washington ZBA meeting to order. Tonight, there are two items on the agenda. One is a new application from Daniel Yadgar. An area variance for a rear yard setback and a side yard setback for a swimming pool, as well as side yard setback for pool equipment. It's 610 Stanford Road. The parcel number is 042590. And the second one is the continuation of the Upton Lake Kristen School. The area variance for a peak roof on a proposed high school at 20 Shepherd's Way. And there are four parcels involved in that. Before we start the first application, I assume everybody's read the minutes from the January 17 meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Any additions or corrections?
I don't have any.
No, I have none.
Can I have a motion? I'll make the motion to approve the minutes then.
Seconded.
Motion by Chair, seconded by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thumbs up, Tate?
Aye.
Okay. Four yays, no nays, I assume. Okay. Who's representing the swimming pool application?
I am.
Come on up to the table and explain what you're attempting to do.
I have my client sit here.
Okay. You can pull the chair up.
Good evening. My name is Raymond Rice. I represent Daniel Yadgar. Mr. Yadgar has filed an application seeking, as you said, three variances for an in-ground swimming pool. One for his rear yard setback, two for his side yard setback. The swimming pool will be located in the rear of his house next to the patio. So its location makes sense in conjunction with the rest of the house. The variance, it's going to be a 40 by 18 pool. I believe you have a map in the application. The rear side setback is seeking a reduction from 70 feet to 35 feet. Okay, 75 feet to 35 feet. The side for the pool is seeking a reduction from 100 feet to 87.8 feet. And for the pool equipment, from 100 feet to 54.9 or 51.5 feet for the pool equipment. And that'd be located on the side of the house.
Right. Just give me that last one again.
The pool equipment?
Yeah.
So at its furthest point away from the side yard, it'd be 54.9 feet. And the closest would be 51.5.
Okay. This is our 10, right?
Yes.
So it's 100 yard on the sides and 75 on the back, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So we're in sync?
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, we're here. Mr. Yadgar initially made this application last fall, but withdrew to get the complete application in because he only requested one of the variances and when he needed three. So, you know, you're going to be faced with several questions you have to clear. Whether or not this is an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Mr. Yadgar, and I would argue that it is not an undesirable change. There's many properties in the same neighborhood that have a swimming pool, something that's not uncommon in the neighborhood. Whether this benefit could be pulled by some different method where no variance would be required, there's really no logical spot other than where he's placing this pool. I mean, if he was to move the pool away from the setbacks, he'd be putting it in a location on the side of his house next to his driveway or in front of his house. It would be an unnatural spot in an eyesore with a pool. Whether this variance is substantial, again, I would argue it is not. The largest variance we're looking for is on the rear setback. That is a wooded vacant lot. So there's going to be minimal impact there on the side. We're talking about less than three feet for the pool and less than 50 feet for the pool equipment. It should be noted that the pool equipment is going to be adjacent to the house. The house is already in the setback because it's a non-conforming pre-existing use. This house was placed on that property prior to the setbacks in our 10 being established. So the house was the house. There was no, there's nothing, nothing that Mr. Yadgar could do, which addresses whether or not this is self-created. While that is not an overall, like a use variance, this is something you can consider. But again, this house was placed on the property before the setbacks were put in place and it would not be self-created. And then whether or not the pool would be an environmental impact, and that would be minimal, of course.
Now, is there a discharge of the pool filter or is this one of these self-contained?
That I don't know. What kind of pools is there? Did you, self-contained pool system?
I don't know the technology, but we're going to probably do a salt water filter system.
It's, it's, yes.
So there's no need to discharge the water into?
None.
Okay. What are you doing around the pool?
Fence. Have to do a fence.
Well, that's necessary to meet the building code.
All right. You're going to build any other structures going around the pool?
Just patio.
Patio.
Patio. Right. Yeah. Right now, this is the patio. And the idea, which is all bluestone, and the idea was just to continue it a little bit right here, just to put some chairs there and that's it. So we just go from this to like a little bit of an L right there.
So there won't be a patio around the sides or the back of the pool?
No, it'll just be the stone that is the frame of the pool.
Okay. So just an L here.
And then the rest is meant to be grass.
And the fence is going to be around the pool or around?
The idea of the fence was more around the property.
So around the whole property, which meets the code?
Just the backyard, basically here, here, and here. And this is already a wall.
It's the dark line indicated on the map submitted. That would be the fence line.
Which is a question I had. I wasn't, with everything going on in this, I wasn't sure if that was another variance or?
I think if you read the code, as long as it's completely.
I got to look it up on the swimming pool.
You know it's in here someplace.
I'll send to whatever's.
Sometimes it's five foot seven.
So we're 90, 90. Yeah. Swimming pool must be completely surrounded by a fence or wall enclosure. Such fence or wall enclosure should comply with the requirements of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. A wall or fence or other enclosure wholly enclosing a dwelling house in the swimming pool should conform to compliance with the laws.
So you have it closed with the stone wall, the house, and the slab?
Yeah. I don't believe that to be four feet, which we would minimally comply with.
Okay. So. And you're saying that's the optimum spot? What happened? Why not rotate it or do something?
Well, you guys had originally asked me that and I wanted to do it this way because I felt aesthetically it looked better. And then I was also taking into consideration just keeping it as tight as possible with my house, not in proximity to any neighbors or houses, I should say.
So the rear setback, there's no house on the side setback. There is a house and you would actually need a variance closer to that?
Correct.
To that side?
Uh huh. So that would increase the, increase the variance needed if you attempted to rotate it, then you're saying?
Correct, for the side.
And the back one is more substantial than the side yard, right? Because you're talking about a 40?
Forty foot variance.
Forty foot. And on the side, you're only talking about a 12, not quite a 12 or 12.2.
But the back is a wooded vacant lot. On the other side, there is another house.
Uh huh. Okay. You say the accessory equipment is by the house, right here in the shaded box in the map?
Beside the air conditioner.
The air conditioning unit is already existing?
Uh huh.
What about these sheds over here in the corner? Are they existing?
Uh huh. Yeah.
Oh, there's two sheds there?
Yeah.
Do any of the neighbors have pools?
Yeah.
Which, which neighbors?
I guess I technically only have?
Well, I can tell you. It's 604 Stanford, which is a property immediately adjacent. 630 Stanford, which is the property on the other side of 620. 308 Shunpike, which is one property in from Stanford Road. 302 Shunpike. Those are just the ones I did a research of in closest proximity. So the majority of property.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
Do you plan on any lighting in the back of the pool? Are you going to be lighting the area or anything?
No, just inside the pool.
Okay. Inside the, all right, I got you. But you're not going to be putting any spotlights on the back of the house to shine on the pool or anything?
Nope. Nothing that's not there already. There's one light on the outside of the house. We're not planning any parties or doing anything ridiculous.
That's where I was headed.
Yeah, no. I have a seven-year-old girl that loves to swim and she's going to join the swim team and want to build her pool.
Any slide or anything like that?
No slide, no diving board. It's really just a nice, can I?
Just a plain old, ordinary pool.
Were you anticipating any screening along this side of your property?
Screening?
Yeah, like bushes or barbed wire or anything like that?
I mean, a fence.
Four foot?
Probably higher at this point.
Mr. Yadgar, you're pointing to the, along the stone wall. I couldn't see your picture.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's where I was pointing, yes.
Okay. Following up on, what kind, you say higher than four foot, six foot?
Yeah, standard, I think a standard fence is six foot.
What type of fencing? Chain link, stockade, wood?
No, a nice wood fence. It's a beautiful house. I'm not going to, it's going to remain beautiful. And part of this whole thing was also like resale value and, you know, I felt making a solid investment. I mean, it's, I'm not going to buy a million-dollar house and then put some really ugly fence up.
So it's not really a see-through type fence?
No, not on that side, no. Solid wood.
Solid wood.
Six-foot solid wood.
Okay.
I don't have any more questions.
No, I have none.
Aaron, you've got any?
So we did see this previously. It's been modified and resubmitted. I think you can, you're going to have to re-type to it for seeker. It does qualify as a type two. The only question I had was, and it's in my memo, the previous version, you showed the water lines that you're going to relocate. I assume that's still proposed because the well's back there?
Yes, it's already.
Okay. It's already done. That's why it's not shown. Okay. Yeah, nothing else for me at this time.
Tate, what do you have? Anything?
My question, what, what is the monetary hardship to move the pool to the other side where you don't require any variances?
Monetary hardship, meaning would it cost you more money to move the pool to the other side? I don't necessarily, I don't know, I don't necessarily.
What's the other side?
We're over here. Over here, by the driveway on the side yard.
Would that be the front of the house?
It'd be the side front, yes. The pool, I don't necessarily know if it was more of an aesthetic practical appearance than an actual monetary. Do you have an existing patio, front patio there?
No, there's no patio.
Oh, there's no patio, it's just grass.
So it's the same amount of money?
It's a relatively small patch of grass.
Okay. So there's no, there's no financial reason why you can't move that pool to a place you don't need a variance, any variance?
I mean, there's, I already have a hole in my backyard, so it's then filling that and then paying for a new one.
Okay.
So that's a pretty big financial.
Okay. Well, you answered my, you answered my question.
Anything else, Tate?
No, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Frank, you said you were going to?
Yep. I have more questions.
Okay. Can I have a motion then to go into public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Well, second that.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Frank. All in favor? Aye. Tate?
Aye.
Okay. unanimous. Okay.
John, is that me I'm done? I have a question. Is it possible to consider dark sky lighting, first of all? And then there's a section in the zoning code itself about glare and elimination of, elimination at the end of the property line? So is that part of the lighting and will the pool lighting be on timers?
Well, the pool, the lighting was going to be in the pool. So are you concerned that it's going to be illuminating outside of the pool from the inside of the pool?
The question is, is a section in the code that speaks about limitation of illumination of lighting to, at the edge of the property?
Okay.
Handle power, handle foot power. So is that going, that's one of the questions. Is that going to be an issue with this particular application?
I don't believe it will.
Okay. My second question is, dark sky lighting has come up a lot in most applications. It's probably going to be codified formally in the next code update. Most of the applications that come through consider dark sky lighting now. So is this going to be something you could do, a shielding or so on? I'm not familiar with the application, but will the lighting be fielded so it doesn't get up into the sky and add to light pollution?
If that could be an issue, then yes, it would be done. But I don't necessarily, that would be an issue at this time.
You think that type of lighting is not going to go into the sky? It'll be fielded down where the most modern lighting is?
Probably yes. It's a brand-new granite pool, so.
But you have to specify it.
Well.
Yeah, so we don't want to need to. That's my question.
Yes. So if that's, you know, my client is a very conscious of.
It's not a big deal. I don't know if you know about dark sky lighting.
No, I, I, yes, a little bit. But yes, it's chilling downwards, yes, I understand.
Yeah.
So yes, that would be something that immediately would be done. I don't necessarily know it would be at this time. I haven't seen, I haven't, I haven't seen the, I haven't spoken to the pool, you know, construction company. The pool, regarding that issue, so I really can't answer 100%.
Okay. So you would consider talking to the lighting people, say, is dark sky lighting applicable? Will you do that?
I think it's applicable. Yeah, sure, we could absolutely ask that question.
My pool light will not be on all night.
Right, will be on a timer, I'm sure.
Probably barely be on. It's going to be on when we're using it.
It's going to be off by 11:00 unless there's a security reasons.
I bet at night 3:00.
I don't think it'll fly at night, okay? So it'll be off by 11:00.
Right.
All right. That's basically my questions, dark sky, and there'll be no glare on the adjacent properties. There's a section about glare in the code.
No, and there'll be a fence.
Okay. That'll be in the plan, might be, John?
Lighting?
Yeah. When they submit their plan for approval.
They don't submit the building plans to us?
Well, the variance was involved lighting, assuming.
Are you asking, are these sections you're talking about in the code now or something that's going to be?
Most of what I said is in the code. The only thing not in the code is dark sky lighting, which will probably be in the next code.
I think that's more applicable to site plans. It's probably more applicable to a site plan project. This is a variance for a pool and the applicant stating that they're going to have, you know, standard interior lights inside the pool to illuminate the pool at night. Not, they're not going to have any outside lighting around the pool, just inside the pool. The typical pool lights you see on the side of a pool, facing horizontally facing.
If I'm a neighbor, am I going to sit there and look at these lights for 11 o'clock or is it going to be some attempt, you know, to cut down on those things in the site plan or whatever you want to call it? That's my question.
Any house with any sort of view of the pool will be blocked by a fence.
By six-foot solid wood fence.
Right.
So you probably won't be able to see the wall.
And you won't be able to see it even without the fence because there's, most of the trees are all grown and you can't even see the other house.
All right. So we're left with dark sky lighting and if it's invisible to anybody else when it goes on? Does that sound fair enough?
Well, Howard, they said they aren't installing any additional lights. There's one on the exterior of the house and there's lighting in the pool and that's area vision.
Well, there isn't any pool at the moment, is there?
What's that?
Is there a pool now? No.
That's what this application is for, whether or not you can get a variance to install a pool. So that's what's before the board. The lighting, as Aaron said, is more applicable to a cleaning board. This is not subject to site plan approval.
I asked, I said, is there any question of they want to consider that?
Well, Howard, there's nothing to consider because it's lighting inside of the pool. There is no, they don't need to consider the dark sky lighting. They're not adding any lighting besides what's already in the pool.
If they didn't need the variance and they could build the pool as a right, I don't think this would come up in James Finley's review of, as far as code compliance. So I don't really think it's something that the ZBA needs to consider.
Well, I've asked because the last two applications before you have.
For parking lot lights on site plans.
And that would make sense.
Lighting and lighting. All right. That's my, that's my, what I brought up, you deal with it how you want.
Thank you, Howard. Alan, I assume you want to talk?
Yes.
Bring your chair up.
So I represent Jim and Lee Cornell, who are here and will weigh in when I'm finished. First thing I want to do is just go over some of the things that were said by the applicant and I'll present, consistent with the letter that I'd submitted, is a couple of important facts, as far as I know. There are pools in the neighborhood. There are none with variances. So there's a significant difference. The pools.
Why? Why is there a difference?
Because all of the pools in the neighborhood comply.
What about the homes, then? Should we make the homes comply too? I'm just.
Is somebody, is somebody asking for a variance for a home?
No, but if the homes don't meet the standard, okay?
But by that same theory, so you can intensify the need of relief, which is what you're suggesting. So these homes are close together. They were built that way. And if, if the argument is there's pools in the neighborhood, well, let's talk about apples to apples. There are no pools that needed variances, as far as I know. Okay? So let's, that's an important fact.
I'm trying to ask you, why do you consider that an important fact?
If they don't need variances, they are presumed to be less impactful on their neighbors. That's why we have five variance standards. So if they don't need that sort of relief, it necessarily follows they are less impactful. That's why there were five variance standards. And you've been on the board a long time. You're going to know better than me whether you granted a variance for a pool, other than Marsha Renner's, where the neighbor wrote a letter in full support and because of the wetland is why Marsha had to move so far away. Board granted that variance because she had the consent of the neighbor most affected and because of the wetlands law that we have. So to my knowledge, there is no other pool variance that I've seen in a long time here and that I'm aware of. Maybe you are, Tom. Secondly, the, what I also learned is the, the filter system will be, essentially requires a 50% variance. The filter system is running 24/7, many months during the year. So while the pool is further, there's a new element or new construction that's built closer to the boundary, basically requires 50% relief. And it's constant. Regarding fencing in my entire property, a couple of things, I don't know, but I think if you go six feet, you might know this, John, I think you need a variance. What's the height?
Six feet is the, if you go over six feet.
Over six? Okay. Very well.
A pool by itself only needs four feet.
Right. I was aware of that. I didn't know the height limitation of what triggered, being at six feet?
It's six feet.
Six feet. Okay. You know, I never thought I'd say in my wildest dreams, I agree with Howard, but.
I've known you for a long time.
But the issue of the lighting is, while I understand it's a site plan or building code issue, the issue of the lighting is impactful and therefore should be something that's a little more elaborate than we've seen tonight in terms of, you're asked to consider the impacts of what's being built. What's being built is a pool or being proposed to be built. And along with that pool comes lighting. So you wanted to know where the filter would be because it generates noise. I think, I think it's a fair question and I do think it should be put on a plan so that if it changes, everybody has something you can look to. I heard what the applicant said. I made a note of it. I know that Ms. Wilson did as well. But if, if you're seeking a variance for a structure, you should have to establish that the elements of that structure aren't going to impact your neighbors. The gentleman on Zoom, referred to Ms. Tate, I'm afraid I don't know him, but he asked a question about financial impact. I'm going to give the board a couple of, it's an identical email. This is an email that, when Mr. Cornell became aware of the pool being constructed, he sent an email to Mr. Yadgar the next day and said, "Look, I didn't get notice of this. I suggest you cease. Don't continue to build. You're only going to increase your harm." And he did that to put him on notice. I give the board copies of this. Despite that, the whole, there was no hole when the email was sent. The digging persisted for a number of days and then we obtained some relief from the court that stopped the digging, I think it was about a week later. That email was sent the day after Cornell's became aware that variances had been granted. It's self-explanatory and James sent it just to try to limit the harm. That's why it was done. Mr. Yadgar, to my knowledge, did not reply, but the digging did continue. The second thing I'd like to give the board, there are two copies of this as well, is Candy Anderson, who is a pretty well-known broker in town, has provided a letter. I'll give you two copies of this. And in the letter, Mr. Yadgar said during his presentation that for resale, a pool would be useful for resale, would help sell the property. By the same token, it would impair the value of the Cornell property, which is what Ms. Anderson says in the last paragraph of the letter, that having a pool that close to their home that's not there now will substantially impair the value of their home. So while Mr. Yadgar's will improve, I don't dispute that a house with a pool is probably more valuable. By the same token, it will impact in a negative way the Cornell property. Those are my comments based on what I heard. In terms of our presentation, the board's aware I'd submitted a letter with some attachments and I just want to go over that. Number one, and I'll do them a little bit of a different order than the statute, but there isn't any question that this difficulty was self-created because the emails establish that in February of 2002, a long time before there was even a contract to purchase, Mr. Yadgar was aware that the Cornells had applied for a variance for a garage. It was denied. Cornell's respected that decision. And Mr. Yadgar indicates in the email, in the third paragraph, fourth paragraph, that he was in the process and he would not purchase a pool, a home rather, without the ability to have a pool. He was aware of the need of a variance and sounds as though he continued to purchase the property and obtain a variance, was well aware of the fact that the Cornells were not, were very polite, but they were very opposed. They had recently been denied one theirself themselves for reasons they understood because the proximities of these homes. They knew that the owner at the time indicated it would impair his value, so the variance was denied and the board properly did that. Mr. Yadgar nevertheless proceeded to purchase property. So on the factor of self-creation, look, nobody had to buy the property. There was a risk naturally to see, will I get a variance? The risk was well-understood because one had already been denied to the neighbor. And so when you voluntarily purchase property and you know there's opposition, it's entirely And so when you voluntarily purchase property and you know there's opposition, it's entirely self-created. This isn't a situation where the zoning law got changed or someone wasn't aware. The applicant was well-aware that variance relief would be needed and proceeded anyway. And I believe the, the exhibits one and two establish that beyond any doubt whatsoever. Now, the second question's substantial. There are three, there are four boundaries. It needs variance relief on two sides of greater than 50% on one side, or the rear yard, and about 50% when you consider the pool equipment. In terms of just measuring is substantial, but, but let's also not forget, there's a use that's being proposed that's not there now. This isn't an extension of a home. This is an entirely new and different use on a non-conforming lot. So, and when, when you're standing in the Cornell's yard, you can see the boundary of Hitchcock Tavelport. So it's not like this is miles away. It's right there. So it's substantial when you consider the totality of the relief that's needed, that someone knew going in was needed. It is quite substantial. It's, you can't look at this as a vacuum and say, well, it's 13 feet, that's all. Remember, the Cornell's house is 15 feet from the boundary. And these houses were built a while ago. So it is substantial. There, there's frankly no sincere way of saying this is insubstantial. In terms of undesirable or detrimental, as I said already, this is an entirely new use. It impacts value. A variance of a comparable nature was denied for good reason to the Cornells, which the applicant was aware of. And there's no set of circumstances where you can say this is good for the Cornell's property. Zero. As far as an alternate location, what I'd ask you to do, which I think is important to look at, when Mr. Yadgar in exhibit one sent his first email to Jim Cornell, the pool is measured out as 30 by 15. We didn't create that. That's what came to Jim Cornell. So it worked because somebody put it there in use of its size. What we presented and showed in our, in our materials is that there is an alternative location for the same sized pool that would not require a variance. It says exhibit five. So we took that pool, we moved it to another location, would not require a variance. We understand it's, it's not as desirable, but it's the same pool, same 30 by 15 pool that was first presented to the Cornells. It's in a different location. It doesn't require the driveway being changed. It doesn't require any variance relief that we can see and it is blocked entirely by their home. So the only person that's impacted by are the homeowners. As far as we can tell. Now, in terms of adverse change, there's a, there's a statement in the variance application that it can't be seen. I've attached as exhibit six, a copy of a photograph taken by, from the boundary where the construction fencing is and.
Sorry to interrupt. Is that taken from Cornell's property?
Yes, taken from Cornell's property. And, you know, the site is easily viewable or you can't not see it. So that statement is just not true. The use, as I said earlier, is entirely new. The equipment is very close. I, I don't understand the technology about a saltwater filter, but I gather that saltwater, the filter will be running all of the time, whether they're using the pool or not. And so based on the totality of those facts, we believe the variance application should be denied because when you look at any of the factors on their own, and in my mind, the most important one is there is another location. And if someone is aware buying a property that there's opposition to it, they're walking into that and creating the problem. And then when they start construction and are told, we should pump the brakes till we sort this out and they continue to dig, that's entirely self-created. Do you have any questions?
Did we see this letter before?
I, I couldn't find it. I found it today.
Because I noticed it's dated January 16th and we're seeing it for the first time today. I was just curious.
Find where I had it, Frank. I found it today and. I looted in my letter that I was going to bring it with me. Couldn't find the darn thing, so.
You guys trying to feel better? Anybody on Zoom want to talk? Go ahead.
Mrs. Cornell.
I'm Lee Cornell.
I'm Lee Cornell.
Oh, I'm getting feedback. You only get one chance to make a first. And it is sad and disappointing to meet my next door neighbor for this. The Yadguards obviously go for an answer. First, they purchased a house knowing that we would object. Close to our property. Second, they deceived the town by falsifying our first application for the pool. They didn't put down, they lied about the side yard variance and the pool equipment. And, um, and that left quite an impression on me. Third, although they claimed to want to be good neighbors, never once since they purchased the house, did they make any effort to be neighborly. In fact, I believe they intentionally avoided us, knowing that the topic of the pool would come up and we would again voice our objections. Fourth, they were aware that we were denied a variance by the Jansons for the very same reason we are objecting to their proposed pool. Maybe in the Yadguards' world, no means maybe. Maybe no means act first and ask for forgiveness later. In my world, no means no. We accepted no as an answer from the ZBA when we were denied our request for a variance for our garage. The survey that the Yadguards submitted in their application doesn't show how close our house is to, their houses to ours. Alan, there was a, I think a parcel access that shows exactly how close they are and I think that.
Really? It's before the board.
They haven't. Our two houses have been 100 feet apart. As you all know, Sanford Road is one of the most beautiful rural roads in our area. A pool and a chain link fence, which I heard proposed in an earlier meeting, around our property would suburbanize our rural neighborhood. And this is also not how our area is zoned. Our family and anyone who buys our house will be deprived of the peace and enjoyment of the property. The constant hum of pool equipment and evening pool parties, which will surely happen when that seven-year-old girl grows up, will drown out the sounds of the spring peepers and the summer crickets. Light pollution, when the pool is used in the evening, will hide the, the night stars. Our water table will be challenged. The smell of sanitizing chemicals will smell and backwashed water will drain onto our property because there's a slope. Allowing a pool and the necessary equipment so close to my property will not only harm my current and future enjoyment of my property, it will have a negative impact on the value and saleability of my house. Please vote no.
And this is Jim Cornell. And following up what Alan said earlier, you know, we applied for a variance to extend our garage three feet closer to the property line in front of this same board in 2021. We, and we, but we were only intending to move the garage extended three feet closer to the property line. The, the owner of, of, of 610 Stanford Road at the time, Mark Jensen, appeared before you twice. He objected to the, the, our, our garage being moved any closer to the property line, even if we proposed to screen it with, with, uh, with plantings. Because, and he objected on the basis that it would, it would negatively impact his property value. It would be unsightly. And, and based upon that, you denied him, you denied us a variance. And to me, it would be the height of absurdity to having, having the same board denying us a variance for something as simple as the extension of our garage to grant a variance as significant as this for a built-in pool. And on top of that, Mr. Yadgar contacted me twice before he purchased the house, three months before he purchased the house. He contacted me through his real estate agent, Karen, Karen Valino, and I told her I, we objected based upon, for the same reason that Mark Jensen opposed our extension of our garage. Mr. Yadgar came back, acknowledged that we were, you know, that we were opposed. He acknowledged having looked through our file and then he, and realizing that, you know, we might be upset with Mr. Jensen because he objected to our variance application. So he offered to horse trade with us. He said, oh, I'll, I won't object to the extension of your garage if you don't object to my construction of a built-in pool. We told him absolutely not. And it's, and, and we were very happy. We didn't, as we, we, we went ahead with our project and we no longer gave any consideration to extending our garage. So I really think, I, I don't understand how this board could rule on the same property line inconsistently. And, and that's, that's what I would like to say.
There are two things I wish to add for the record. There's a, exhibit two is a letter from Michael Sloan. He was the architect representing the Cornells with respect to the variance relief they were seeking. And Mr. Sloan recounts the objection and the nature of the objection and ultimately whether it was withdrawn or denied, that the path was certainly that it wasn't going to be granted. Exhibit four is the actual variance application and you can see that the board voted unanimously in favor of the variances that were granted. And the one for the garage was crossed out because it either wasn't granted or it was clear that it wasn't going to be granted. Now, Michael Sloan, in paragraph four of his letter, indicates, and I've certainly seen the board function like this before, is can you do it in another way? And they basically couldn't, so that was, you know, that was the end. This is, that was the outcome. So that is, that is of an evidentiary nature before the board. And lastly, just so, I know this is recorded, but exhibit three is, is the parcel access map that Mrs. Cornell was referring to. And you can see that the two-acre parcel is the Cornell's home and you can see the proximity to the boundary. The 1.7 acre parcel is the, uh, is the Yadgar home.
And just to add to what Alan's saying, you know, this pool, if the variance was granted, would be only 102 feet from our house. And the pool equipment would be 65 feet. And, you know, this, this, that puts it in, in better perspective. You, you're actually putting the pool on our property, almost. The other thing is, in terms of his, where his alternate site, there, that's the site that, that we identified on the property, that would, would fit his, you know, his pool perfectly without any variance, would, would be, it's a, would be suitable, it would have no intrusion on any of the neighbors. And it would be, it would be fully within his rights to build the pool. It wouldn't require a variance. And it's, and yet he's, he's not, he's not disputing the fact that he can, there is an alternative site. It's just that he wants one on his terms and the location that he wants. And in, in disregard to his neighbor's interests that were communicated to him well in advance of purchasing this house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, I would just like to make a few comments if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay. So of course, the public comment was received and that'll be part of the record upon which the ZBA conducts its review. As the attorney, I do have an obligation to ensure that this information is reviewed, that it's accurate, that you all have the facts you need to make your determination. So I would like to address the points that were made by the neighboring property owner and point out a few of the arguments, for lack of a better term, that were presented to the board. I think that it is certainly worth noting that on parcel access, the Cornell property in the house is 14.4 feet from the property line. So clearly it does not conform with any setback requirement. So that creates an issue. I also think it's worth noting that 604, which, correct me if I'm wrong, the Cornells previously owned, is that right? Yes, at 604, that has a pool, is immediately adjacent to the south. And then they moved recently, I think, to 620, knowing that that house was very close to a property line. Mr. Rapleya mentioned risk. You do assume a risk when you buy a property because there are other people's rights that are always at play. And variances, of course, as we all know, are a way to deviate from the law as we know it. So I wanted to address that to begin with. The variance that was denied or withdrawn, whichever it may be, was to go from 14.4 feet to 11.4 feet. That is not, if we're using fruit, apples to apples, that is apples to oranges to a variance that is set further in from the house at 88 feet. So I just want that to be clear because it's easy to present this information persuasively, but not to accurately draw the comparisons. Also, the equipment is next to the house. The house is in the setback already. This house at 610 was built in 1955. 620 was built in 1964. So if we want to even use that measurement, this house was here first, the equipment is near it. And the logical place to put equipment would be where you have other equipment. But again, that's for the board to make the determination. Um, as far as the denied variance, I, I don't particularly think it's relevant. Like I said, it would, they're not similar. They're, they're actually quite different measurement-wise and purpose-wise. Whereas, not to go bad, but you presented all of these arguments, so now I'm kind of legally obligated to address them.
With all due respect, counsel, you're advocating. In my 31 years of practicing law, I have never seen an attorney for a board essentially advocate for an app.
I'm presenting the facts to your letter.
Forgive me.
I want you to speak, Mr. Rapleya.
Alan, we let you speak.
Thank you so much.
Let's sit.
I plan to speak again, John.
So with this property, if you're going to present these arguments, you have to be prepared for somebody on their behalf to research them. I understand it's a disadvantage that I go through your letter and research your case law that isn't relevant, but that's what the job is, right? I feel like you would be the same if you were.
I wouldn't do it if you do it. It's very, we're very different people, I'm afraid.
That's true.
That is.
I don't take it as the assault you think it is. So there would have been room to.
Alan, I appreciate.
Yeah, I'm not going to sit here and have her throw barbs at me.
Alan.
That's ridiculous.
We've, we've, in the past, we've let people speak and we've let each person speak and we've asked other people not to interrupt them.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Pretty much a last word. I learned that in Supreme Court. It's always entertaining. So the Yadguards knew they needed a variance and by the exhibits that were presented, communicated that and their knowledge, communicated with Mr. Finley. I think that did show their due diligence. The only reason this application is back before the board were due to errors that we, as a town, made for procedural requirements. So I would think that that wouldn't be a knock against the application. To, let's see, the proximity of the homes, again, this home was built on the Cornell property after the other home was built. And I think that they're well within their right to apply for a variance that's more setback than their houses to the property line. right to apply for a variance that's more setback than their houses to the property Unwanted noise, light, and other factors, as Howard said, if, if light is an issue, and they'll look into it, then they will comply as necessary, but there is no light that is part of the plan that'll be installed on the exterior of the property. Unwanted noise, his children swam in the pool at 604 and many other adjacent properties. I would anticipate the noise would be as expected of the pool. The impact to the property value, that was an argument made under environmental and physical impact. I don't think that would be properly before the board. I don't think that the pool itself has any negative environmental impacts, but again, that's for your analysis. There are, of course, other pools in the area. Let's see, I, I will reference, because you would expect your attorney to go through the cases that are cited, the case that was referenced, Matter of King versus Town of Islip, which was provided as a comparison. It's actually very distinguishable from the facts we have here. There, it was an above-ground pool in a beach town that was a sandy base of ground, and there, the property owner was seeking to install a above-ground pool in a zoning district where it was not even permitted. So that was more of a legislative issue. It wasn't even the use that was allowed in the area. And it was denied. That also was an issue because the property was 8,400 square feet, which is .1 acres, and 12,000 square feet was required. And that's not an issue here before the board. There is plenty of space. It's just a matter of where on that property it could be. So those would be my comments in reply to the submission from the neighbors. I will say consent, there's no consent. There's no consent necessary before the ZDA, before the planning board. Neighbors, of course, are entitled to their opinion. That is not a determining factor, nor would it have been one and if that variance that the Cornell's applied for was denied. And I think outside of that, the board has any questions about the factors, truly? Feel free to ask. I think that the substantial argument that was made for the 50% equipment is just that it's so close to the house, and just that the house already encroaches into the setback. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Sarah. I would just like to, can I just say something? I've been on the planning board for, I would say, about eight years. I've never seen a display like Ms. Wilson just made tonight. She is, she is... You're sitting there, I basically, basically advocating to Yagard, his attorney didn't say one word.
Jim, he doesn't need to. The letter was submitted to the ZDA. I'm their counsel, and it's the same with the planning board. You have similar applications that would present those arguments the same way.
It's, it's beyond outrageous, but I would...
Jim, please do not disparage any of the other speakers.
I'm not disparaging, I'm just saying, I've never seen that, any, any...
My... If you got concerns that you want to raise that are legitimate about the pool, I will be glad to listen to you.
I think, I'm sure, John, it's fair enough. I think it's important also to make a good record, so that the record is very clear. And I, I've not observed what I observed this evening in my 31 years of practicing law, where an attorney, without being questioned, essentially offers her opinion. That's not a criticism, it's an observation. So I'll comment on those observations. Number one, so one of the things Ms. Wilson said was, well, when the Cornell's bought, they knew their house was close to the boundary. True. But there was no pool there. That fact slipped out of that sentence. So both of the houses, forgive me, I'm speaking, you can run behind me, but it's rude. Both of the houses were close to the boundary, but there was no pool there. So those are the facts. The projection of opinion that they should have expected it is exactly what was projected. And I don't remember a board member asking that opinion. There's not an informal, a council for a board is not an informal board member. If you said, gosh, Sarah, what do you think about that? I, I suppose I would have expected that answer. I didn't hear any board member ask that opinion. Secondly, a comment was made, they were well within their rights. Anybody's within their rights to apply for something? That doesn't sanction it as being proper. And we know that they're well within their rights. To suggest it because they're well within their rights, they deserve something, which was what was suggested, is just simply untrue. Regarding the Islip, not Islip, opinion, the case is directly on point because it was a pool variance application.
Use or area?
Area, Frank.
Area?
Area. Now, it may have, no, it's definitely area, absolutely area. I'll send you the opinion.
No, you don't have to. I just couldn't tell from the letter was, it was letting area use.
Is it users or area?
Go ahead and read it.
Yeah, yeah, read it.
It's area for a pool where it was not even authorized in the district.
So it's area, I think is the answer, which is what I thought. What's interesting is, there's no countervailing law that's being offered to suggest the variance is appropriate. So what I have is a comment on, it's not an appropriate case, in my opinion, from counsel, without being asked. It's an area variance case. It's right on point. Google pools, put it in Westlaw, you're going to find plenty of, and plenty of denials. So I'm, I'm sorry it's come to this, but I've observed something tonight I've never seen before. So I think that what, what's surprising to Jim Cornell is he hasn't seen it before either. So if Ray Raish has authority for his position, I would expect that. What I wouldn't expect is essentially the theory that counsel for the board has to advise the board. Of course they do. When they're asked the question, what does this law mean, or what does that law, what they're not asked for, that I've ever seen before, is their personal opinion about who is right and who is wrong. And that's what I saw tonight, and I'm sorry that I saw it.
Hey, Mr. Rapleye, let, let me just set the, let me set the record straight. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. You advocated for your client, Mr. Yagard's attorney advocated for his client, the applicant, and Ms. Wilson simply advised the board. I think you're trying to twist something into, you know, that really isn't anything, and I think it's unfair and inappropriate. I understand the emotions here, but she was doing her job, and for you to suggest anything else is inappropriate. You did your job, Mr. Yagard's lawyer did his job, and then let's just leave it at that.
We disagree on the scope of jobs, but thank you.
Yeah, fair enough.
The applicant want to say anything else?
If you don't mind, just, cognizant of the time, it's getting late, but I have a lot of talking to you, but I just want to address a, a couple of issues. And just to be clear, Mr. Rapleye did submit a letter to the, to this board dated February 16th. I never received such a letter. I was not in position to respond to any of the statements made into it. I walked in tonight, and I was handed a copy of it with no time to prepare for it. And then also then tonight on Ms. Anderson's letter dated January 16th, I'd just like to note that while she seems to have vast experience selling homes for the past 30 years in the Millbrook area, and she purports to be an expert, but she's an associate real estate broker, she's not a certified appraiser. She has not offered any dollar amount of value, but could be the impact of the Cornell property as present and with a pool. At best, she is speculating that there be any change in value. At best, it's speculation. So that's what I would say on, on that, and I have nothing more to add.
Thank you.
If I can add, John, when I, when I needed the application, it wasn't provided to me. I had to come up and get it down hall. So anything that was submitted, we usually submit things to the town hall.
I'm sorry, Alan, you had trouble finding it on the website, so you came...
Yeah, well, what I mean is, I wasn't provided it by the applicant.
Oh, by the applicant.
So what I'm saying to Ray is, you didn't receive something. It was filed with town hall, just like their zoning application. I had to come up and get it. It wasn't sent to me.
Okay, I understand.
Alan, did you ask me for a copy? I never, I don't remember emailing you.
We had, we had, we had a long conversation in the parking lot. I kind of thought it was coming, I thought it was coming my way.
I just remember I married my father that day. I'm sorry. I apologize for that conversation, exactly.
I'm just...
I think everybody said their piece. I'd like a, a motion to close the public hearing.
Subdued.
Motion by Frank, second by Katie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Tate?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we closed the public hearing. Before I do any thing for seeker, our questions, anybody have any more questions?
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Yagard, this is for you, if you don't mind coming forward. So you're presuming to put it here. Here, you would need a variance. You don't have anybody here to have your privacy or pool. Why would you not think about doing this?
I'll be honest, like...
No, I just would like to know.
Yeah, it isn't even...
Because there's no...
To see that, to see that plot of land, it would not even ever occur to you to put a pool there.
Right in here?
No, it's like some lopsided circular...
Okay, that way you reach, you know, you wouldn't have any issues.
No, I, I understand, but also, it's, it's not my backyard, it's like a, it's a side entrance from the house.
That was my question to you, why?
Yeah, it never in a million years occurred to me, even when I understood the variance thing, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my question.
You were looking at, is there another feasible, more feasible location?
Right, and if you, if you're, if this is already going to be what it is, and if you had an alternate place where here, there's nobody, there's nobody here, there's nobody on this side, the privacy's there, and intrusion's not there, possibly, that's all I was thinking. I was just thinking of an alternate, where they would put it. That's all.
Doesn't seem feasible to me.
And no variances, you know?
Yeah, it didn't seem feasible to me to put it in the front yard, and the wells and behind the house, running water, there may be a difficult problem, too.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I kind of look at it and say, the backyard, having been a pool owner and having kids, and I want to be, I want to be on the patio, I want to be able to see the kids. I don't want to go around to the side yard.
Right.
If you did put it in the front, then you got to fence the front of the house.
Right, I just wanted to ask.
So I kind of look at it from feasibility, that backyard is the most feasible place to put a pool, but that's my personal opinion.
And there's a pool here.
Yep. Okay, then, you know, in terms of environmental impact, that, I understood, right, there's no discharge of the, because this is one of the filters now, one of the modern filters, that you don't discharge, have to backflush the filter, so you're not discharging any water into any, onto your property or into your septic system or your well, so. In terms of environmental impact, I don't, I guess I don't see any environmental impact with the new pools. Once again, that's my, my opinion, that. In terms of changing the character of the neighborhood, Sarah's already indicated that it's a pool on the other side, a pool someplace down further there, and across the street, I guess she referred to someplace.
We had that testimony from the applicant, too, before Sarah mentioned it. The applicant did state that there is pools in the neighborhood.
And we're not talking about a use here, that term has been thrown around quite a bit. It's not a use variance, it's an area variance, so. In terms of the factors, self-created, yeah, I guess I have to say, you know, anytime you do anything, it's somewhat self-created, but it's not a, in terms of an area variance, self-created is not something that rules it out like on a use variance, so.
Just speaking for myself, if there's other pools in the area, I don't see that there's going to be an undesirable change produced with this pool here. Mr. Rapleye did suggest that the pool could be placed someplace else on the property without variances, but I think that the test is whether there is another feasible way of doing it, and putting the pool in the front yard, in my opinion, doesn't seem feasible at all. It's a type-two action. I haven't heard or seen anything that would be in danger to the, to the environment. Substantial, well, the rear setback certainly isn't substantial. The setback for the pool itself is not substantial, that's only looking for a 12-foot variance. The only thing that Mr. Rapleye brought up is that the variance sought for the pool filter is about a 50% variance. But when you look at the Cornell home, that's only 14 feet off the line, putting the pool pump over 50 feet away from the line, doesn't seem to me that it would be substantial, given where Cornell's house is. If I remember that case correctly with Cornell, his house is like 14 or 15 feet off the line, and he wanted to add onto the house to bring it extremely close to the line. Yagard didn't own the home yet, it was another guy, Jansen, who objected to it. And I could be wrong, but I'm starting to feel that there's some sour grapes that Cornell didn't get their variance for the side yard, and it seems like they're trying to punish this guy for something that Jansen did. But all in all, I just, I just don't think the setbacks, the variances sought are all that substantial, given the, given the brutality of circumstances here. That's my, that's my thinking.
Katie, you got any other thoughts?
No.
Tate, you want to weigh in on any of the factors?
You know, I, I think, I was feeding my back, sorry. Yeah, I think settle, setback ordinances are important. They're the law, and without it, you have chaos among all the priorities. And I think if you can move your pool without making three variances... I'm so sorry.
I'm so sorry.
Then that is the most prudent thing. That's my thought.
That's my thought.
And I don't care if it's on the front or the side.
And I don't care if it's on the front or the side.
They bought the property.
They bought the property.
But Tate, using your logic, why have a ZDA if nobody's going to get a variance? If they've got to comply with the setback rules? I couldn't even see where you're coming from on that.
Well, I think it's to enforce the setback, and to grant variances where it is impossible in, I'm searching for the word. I guess just in general compliance with the area and the property.
This is Yagard's.
Okay.
Amen. Or else it'll be here.
Sorry. Okay. I think we weighed in on all the criteria. Any we missed, Sarah?
No, I think you covered everything, went through the factors. To clarify the record, they're not my personal opinions. I have no dog in this fight. I do have an obligation to ensure you have all the information, what's been commented on, where it deviates from what I think are relevant facts for this board to consider. So I will, today and every day, give you anything I think is useful and related to what's been made part of the record. But I think that you have looked at everything. The board is, of course, obligated to give the minimal variance that it determines necessary under the Town Hall. And the decision is yours.
Thank you. Okay, since this is a type 2 action, I'll make the motion that this is a type 2 action. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Motion by Chair, seconded by Frank, for a motion on type 2 action. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
unanimous, Chris. Okay. Now the question comes up on variances and any conditions that go with it.
I'll take a shot. I make a motion that we approve a rear yard setback of 40 feet, a side yard setback for the pool in the amount of 12.2 feet, and another side yard setback for the pool equipment of 48.5 feet on the following conditions and rationale. I think based upon the testimony from the applicant and those against the application, I don't think that there is an undesirable change in the neighborhood by granting these variances. In my opinion, I don't see that the applicant could benefit with any other feasible place to put the pool. There are other places to put the pool, whether it's more feasible than in the rear. I don't think so. I think under the totality of circumstances, I don't find that the variances are substantial. And I also do not find that there would be any adverse effect on the environment. It is true that this is a self-created hardship, but I don't think that that should be determining factor in this case. I would vote to approve all the variances on the condition that the applicant install a six-foot wooden stockade fence that would help screen the Cornell property. And also upon the grounds that the pool lighting be looked at so that there's no light trespass to any adjoining property. That's my motion.
Any amendment, Katie? I'll second that. So a motion by Frank, seconded by the Chair. Just do a voice vote. Chair votes aye.
Aye.
Frank, Katie?
Go to Tate. Give me a minute.
Tate?
I'm gonna vote.
Yeah, you're aye.
No. Nay.
Nay.
So the back of the house, if he has a patio here, he has a patio here. I just don't see any market. And Mr. Yegard? There is absolutely no other way that you can put it on the other side of the house.
I promise you there's none. Like you've never heard of me?
No, I just...
Never heard anyone here before, even ask it?
No.
They're putting it here.
No, the...
It was...
I want to clear...
Here's the map.
Here's the map. This is Cornell.
Our house right here.
There's their house.
Mm-hmm.
There's the pool. And there's the filtering pump.
Just to this area here, and just to their backyard.
Yep. This is the patio he's talking about.
Where's here?
That's existing.
That's here already, okay.
Yeah, I see it.
They just try and find them, and begin here, then it's here. And it's here. It's a little further, but not much further. And then fold here.
How about a site visit?
How about a site visit?
Can I read it to the Cornells?
No.
Okay, then no.
Your votes, no then?
I'm sorry, everyone. I just want to make a very conscious decision. The machinery is not going to be here.
No, that's where they originally wanted to put the equipment.
And we told them no.
And we told them no. That's how it got moved.
Right.
How about a site visit?
How about a site visit?
There's a motion on the floor, Tate. We have to go through the motion first.
Have to go through the motion.
It's denied. It needs three votes, three ayes to pass. And if we need a vote no, they can't come back to us.
Just so you know, Mr. Cornell. Asking for the site visit.
Tate, that's a site visit. It was Mr. Cornell.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your back is thonged.
Sorry, I misunderstood. Sorry, Tate.
No worries.
You want a site visit or something?
Is it possible instead of having... Because I don't want the application. I don't... Yeah.
Sarah, can we with... Can we table the motion?
You can't. Yeah, you could table it. I would recommend Frank table your motion if you want to do a site visit. And then you could come back and go out there, schedule a visit to go view the property. I think they've signed the consent to inspect form, Aaron.
Yes.
Yes, that was...
Is that where you're going?
Yeah, I want to make a really informed decision.
Because if he can't come back with another application somewhere else, then no.
He can. He can come in with a different application, John. If the pool is smaller, yes, he can.
It's slightly different. But I think to satisfy some of the board's concerns, I would make a motion to table this vote until next meeting and make arrangements with the applicant for a site visit with some of the members.
Yes. Does he have a second?
Somebody has to second my motion.
Oh, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Tate, you want to go on the site visit?
Yes, please. Yeah, please.
Okay, keep in mind that only two of us can be together.
Yeah, because otherwise you open meeting law problem.
Okay.
How does that work? Like you are to make a vote. Are we... Making the site visit, is Katie to vote? Or does everybody re-vote?
Re-voting.
Would be re-voting, I assume.
And that's allowed?
Yes, that would be permitted. It's as if the vote... The motion has been made, but then your votes were not finalized. So if the site visit impacts the Chair's decision, you're entitled to change your vote. If it impacts Katie's decision, she'll be able to cast your vote. And if you're still at a stalemate next month after the visit, you could vote into... Well, now you have 62 days because of public hearing. So just keep that in mind.
That's a good question. Actually, if he couldn't come back, if he could come back for your variance, correct? And I didn't... If he came back with the same exact variance, I understand. But what stops him? I don't know the answer. But I assume that if you come back for... If you built a smaller pool.
Well, my understanding was if there was something substantially different or something changed in terms of, let's say, the zoning laws or something like that, then they could come back. Okay?
But it had to be substantial.
But it had to be... That was my understanding. Am I correct there, Sarah, or am I...
Yeah, that's the case law that I have discovered is a material change or a substantial change to what the variance is.
Katie, come back.
All I'm suggesting is that if the pool were smaller and the equipment were in a different location, less impactful, you could reapply for a variance. I'm not aware of contrary application, but I could...
Alan, just for your... For reference, the equipment was in the corner of the property, right next to the Cornell house. We started this first time.
I remember that.
Okay, so... Okay.
That has been changed. And just for clarity, we're not discussing a different application. What is before the board is what Mr. Yegard is applying for. Those three variances, that's what we would be voting for.
And would the Cornells have the right to be present for the site visits? So if the board member had a question about impact on them?
There's no discussion allowed at a site visit. You're there to go and make observations. And any discussion that would result from the site visit would be had at the public forum.
Well, we're going to be on Yegard's property anyways, not Cornell's. We're going to be on the applicant's property.
Yes, but we can't make suggestions as to what we think or what we should want to do.
Just want to see.
Just want to see. How do we make arrangements for Katie and Tate to visit the site?
You want to go anywhere you want.
Where you want. You okay with that, Tate?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Would you like to be part of a site visit to look at this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. What Mr. Yegard is saying is you're free to visit anytime you want to.
Okay. Thank you.
You can go together or...
Just go more than two people.
Okay, no more than two. And you can't really ask questions. You can just observe.
Any two involved, you're not limited to two.
You are limited to two.
At one time?
At one time.
At one time, yeah.
Otherwise it becomes a meeting.
Well, five of us could go, but we take a little trip.
All right, so you could all go, just go separately?
Yeah.
Are there five?
Five. There's five Fletcher.
Fletcher. Okay. Very good.
Thank you, Ron.
So this is... Do we need a motion to continue this till next?
No, you tabled the motion that is being voted upon and you close the public hearing. So that would not be reopened.
Okay. Okay. Then I guess we're to the Upton Lake School, okay?
It's too late. Come back in time.
Basically, that's what we're going to tell you, okay? The status is that the planning board has not done a seeker vote yet. So that since they are the lead agency, we're not allowed to...
Vote on it.
Vote on it.
Hold the hearing. Open the hearing, but continue it.
Yes.
So, okay, can I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Subdued.
Motion by Frank, seconded by Katie. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
For the board's reference, the Clinton... East Clinton Fire Department, we got a response from. They said it was no concern. They were okay with the roof, okay? We have not heard from the Millbrook Fire Department. And Katie followed up with them. We heard from the County Planning Board, and their response was it's a matter of local concern.
Yep.
Okay, so the only one we're still waiting from then is the Millbrook Fire Department. And I think that's everything, okay?
And then waiting for action by the planning board, right?
We're waiting for an action by the planning board. Okay, so...
Yeah.
Unless anybody has a question?
My only recommendation to the board would be if Seeker is going to go on, he may not need to come every month. If you have questions, perhaps you could... You still have to open the public hearing in case other people come and make comment. But to save the applicant from having to come, maybe once the planning board finishes Seeker, you'll know. And then the ZBA would likely, at that point, be making a decision. So you're not here for an hour and a half.
Yeah, Kristen will be able to tell us.
What the heck? They've only come for the last five months for a planning board.
True.
What's another hour and a half?
Well, you got to see it, didn't you?
Well, make sure you know that. My summary... Between my summary sheets that we send around before each meeting and Kristen's communications, you'll know.
Okay.
I ask you a dumb question. Is this just for the roof or is this for the whole project?
Since the roof.
Well, we need a seeker for the whole project. But since the planning board is the lead agency, they're the one responsible for seeker. We can't do an independent seeker.
That's not my question, John. I get confused.
The ZBA...
What you're doing now involves just the roof or does it involve the whole project?
Yes, the roof. Planning board's the whole project. We're just the roof.
That's what I... Okay, that's my question.
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chair, seconded by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Tate?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's it. I apologize for...
We probably should have done his first.
I like Sarah's suggestion. We'll let you know next time.
The addresses, and then they would notify the Phippsy Journal and do the certified return.
That's the way Fishkill does it, kind of Fishkill does, Phippsy doesn't, Phippsy does all that, but Fishkill makes you do it.
I think last month we spent $500 just on notices between...
Oh, we should get that out of escrow.
And planning board, yeah, but there's so much already taken out of escrow, we just raised escrow. We'd have to raise it again.
Yeah, but I've had two other applications, when the escrow gets low, the town says, give me more money before you can come back to us.
That's true. Or we can set an escrow amount early in the meeting when we think a project's going to take a while, have a lot of issues, we can say we think the escrow should be five grand for this one.
Yeah.
We can do that for some more complicated applications going forward if you want, but...
Unless, of course, the escrow amounts are already set.
Well, they're based on, the code has the set amounts for initial escrow, but initial is just, you never know what the consultants are going to say.
Yeah.
I have a question about, especially with Mr. Ovi, Upton Lake, do I, does another hearing notice have to go out every month?
No, you only notice the first one, and then as it's continued, there's usually language. I'll look at one of the public notices that says for every future adjournment date as well, like that serves as the notice.
Okay.
The only time you have to re-notice is if he changes the application. If there's an amended application and he wants 48 feet instead of 45 feet, then it makes for a larger variance, so then you have to re-notice, because somebody who may not have had issue with it before could have issue with it, and that would be a change.
So I, so Mr. from the Yadgar application, it wouldn't need to be noticed again?
No. You've noticed it, and the public hearing is closed, so they're just adjourning the decision.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's okay.
The only other thing I've got is I was working on a short-term rental section with Mike Murphy and Bobby Yodia, a person from the planning board. I think we've got a rough draft of that. When Mike comes back from vacation, I believe it goes to the town board for their initial review on it.
And they're the ones that pass it as a local law.
It's probably going to take, I think the, Jeff was saying, probably until the summer, if we're lucky.
He's probably right.
Yeah, I need a motion to close the public hearing, I mean, in the meeting. Motion by Katie, seconded by Frank, all in favor to close?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you.